Okay, I'm going to call to order the Janesville City Council meeting for Monday, October 27th. Have some safety information that Fire Chief would like me to give out, and I'll read first. Good evening, the Janesville Fire Department, following the International Fire Code and International Building Code, has advised that standing is not permitted inside council chambers for safety reasons. Everyone must be seated to keep exit pathways clear. The hallway outside council chambers may accommodate up to 15 standing individuals. Any additional attendees are welcome to sit in Room 416, which I believe is right over there. And if you wish to speak during public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing and on matters which can be affected by council action, please make sure you have signed up. City staff will announce the names of registered speakers in all areas listed above. In case of emergency, use the stairs and not the elevator to exit. Walk to the north side of the police department and wait for further instructions. If you'd stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Clerk, if you could do roll call for me, please.
Council President Burdick.
Here.
Council Vice President Squire.
Here.
Council Member Miller.
Here.
Council Member Williams.
Here.
Council Member Cass.
Here.
Council Member Erdman.
Here.
Council Member Nino, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Okay, all seven are present, we do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Item three, recognitions are none. And for tonight's purpose, I'm going to move the public comments after we do the consent agenda and the two business items. For those people that are here, for those to be cognizant of their time. And then we'll do the public comments right before common council announcements. So we'll start with reports by the city manager, Kevin Lehner.
Thank you, Council Member Burdick. I just have a brief statement tonight. I know that there are lots of folks here that are concerned about the data center proposals. And I just wanted to kind of give a broad overview of where we're at as it relates to that process. You know, I really appreciate folks showing up and expressing their opinions about a topic that's in front of the city council. This is a very important topic, and I'm glad that folks are here to express their opinions to their elected representatives. And I just want to take a step back and talk about where we are, and just make sure that I give a full view of what we are doing at this particular point in time. Several months ago, the city acquired the GM JACCO site and some neighboring properties due to its current blighted condition as it currently exists. And our original plan consisted of developing a conceptual redevelopment plan for the site with assistance of a local advisory board, which has been created, is the GM JACCO Advisory Board. And to go through an interactive process to develop a conceptual plan for what the project could look like in the future. After we acquired that site, we were approached by two different data center development companies who wished to acquire the site. At the time, it is believed, and we don't have all the information to make this decision at this point, that the site could be a viable site for a data center due to its proximity to large transmission lines and the possibility of improving the infrastructure to the site in a relatively quick timeframe to accommodate such a use. The initial estimates of the conceptual proposals which were discussed would that the project be valued at more than $1 billion and create hundreds of jobs. So due to the potential size of the project and the public interest of the project of this type, council policy requires me to have a conversation with the city council that such a discussion is being pursued. And we asked the city council if we should have discussed these concepts further. The council advised us to do two things, continue the conversations and to make it public that we are considering a data center for the site, understanding that there would be a wide amount of interest in such a proposal. So in order to do that, we issued what's known as a request for proposal. And really, the intent was to determine how much interest there was in the property for use of this site, to learn more about the company seeking to propose data centers on this site, to learn more about data centers in general. They are obviously a thing that is attracting a lot of attention these days, and we wanted to make sure that we had all the information that we possibly could. And to collect information about the pros and cons of data center developments, and really to determine, to collect enough information to determine if we should take the next step. So where are we at right now? We've issued the RFPs, we received two responses, and we're considering whether or not to move forward with a letter of intent with one of the two companies or to reject them outright. For your information, a letter of intent is a non-binding agreement that sets the high level terms for additional negotiations. During this time, significant additional studies, projections, timelines will be created. And if the project is determined to be feasible, negotiations will commence on what's known as a development agreement. The development agreement outlines the specifics of what a proposal would entail, including what the project would look like, how big it would be, all the sorts of things that would be covered within a detailed development agreement, how would it be integrated in the community, all those sorts of things. So the fundamental question is, what are our interests in this proposals and why would we entertain such a proposal? So the reasons are, is that there is the possibility that if we pursued such a proposal, that it would address the serious environmental concerns at the Brownfield site, that there would be a significant number of high-paying jobs, that we would have the potential of strengthening community infrastructure, economic growth within the community, including thousands of construction shops during construction. And we also want to make sure that it would be compatible with neighboring uses, that it would preserve open space and create connections, and ensure that developments of this type would not overburden our utilities like water and power infrastructure. So if the interests align and we've done our due diligence, then the next step would be for the council to consider a non-binding letter of intent. We are not going to do that this evening, we're not going to make any decisions this evening regarding the proposal. We're simply going to provide an update to the city council in closed session as to where we're at. I know there's a lot of interest in the concepts of what is being proposed, and as you all know, we have signed non-disclosure agreements. And due to the competitive nature of the proposals, we aren't disclosing the details at this time. But should we move forward, we will bring forward all the details that we possibly can and work it through multiple layers of approvals as we go forward, which will include public forums and public input during that process. So we are, if you were to use a football analogy, we are maybe at the first yard line of even considering something. And that's where we're at. So I just wanted to make sure that folks do that. And again, just let folks know that there are no decisions being made tonight. And due to the competitive nature of the proposals, we are going to be given update to the city council in closed session. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Questions for the city manager, reference the report. Okay, moving on, presentation of the financial statements for Q3, we got Mr. Godak here to present those for us.
Thank Council President Burdick, good evening, City Council, Dave Godak, Finance Director. I don't know what I just did. I got it. Okay, so tonight, just want to do a review of the financial statements through the end of quarter three, which ended September 30th, do a comparison of actual expenses to the 2025 general fund budget, and then talk a little bit about general fund projections for the years, particularly the need for supplemental appropriations and any projected excess or deficit in revenues over expenditures. So we've had a strong performance in the general fund revenue through September 30th, 2025. Year-to-date, our revenues are about $53 million, $53.7 million. It's about $911,000 more than the same time period in 2024. About 90% of budgeted revenues have been realized. Couple of things that have increased our revenues this year, exempt personal property aid and investment income are both higher than they were in prior years or higher than what we budgeted. Year-to-date, permit revenue is down about $117,000. When we talk about revenue, we really look at six categories: property taxes, other taxes like hotel and motel tax, user fees such as building permits, interest income, state aids, and then other miscellaneous revenue. So the pie chart here shows you that the large majority of our revenue is from property taxes. It's a little bit skewed looking at it here, it sits at a little bit north of 71%, but that's because we recognize our property tax revenue in January. And when you compare it to straight-line budget, we still have three months left of the year. State aids are sitting a little bit north of 9%. And again, a lot of those state aids aren't paid until October, November, so we'll see that number increase. The other numbers are relatively stable, relatively close to where we'd expect them to be. Interest income is over budget, but again, that's just, we've realized a lot more interest income this year than we budgeted, based on the lack of action by the Federal Reserve to cut interest rates that we were predicting when we were putting the 2025 budget together. Overall, we've controlled general fund expenditures well through September 30th of 2025. Year-to-date, our expenditures are about $46.8 million, it's about $1.7 million more than 2024 year-to-date. About 74% of our budgeted operating expenditures have been realized through September, we'd expect about 75%. All of our expenditure categories, except for public safety, neighborhood and community services, and debt service are at or below straight-line budget as of September 30th, 2025. The real easy one there is debt, we make that debt payment in February, it's for the whole year, we're not going to have any more payments there. This is just a graph of that, the green bars show what our spending is in dollars, and then the red line graph shows the percentage as we move across. Generally, expenditures are good, they're expected to fall within the council appropriation. A couple of areas of note, city attorney is 90% expended, and we've seen an increase in outside attorney fees this year that have exceeded the budgeted amount. Recreation administration is 88% expended, this is really a result of the allocation of salaries. More time being spent on recreation stuff than what we had budgeted from some of our folks who are charged for the recreation budgets. And public safety has exceeded straight-line budget as a result of overtime, which is hurting budget performance. We do believe that a supplemental appropriation request will be necessary, but it's really going to be for three items. One is to designate the $500,000 donation to the Boys and Girls Club into a special revenue fund that the council approved the last meeting. The second is to cash finance CIP items that we had discussed at the study session back on Thursday. And then the third is, there's a potential that if we have budgets that are overspent, we would need some either reallocation of resources from one program to a different program or a supplemental appropriation. Overall, we have about $1.5 million in expenditure restraint capacity for 2025, which means we can adjust and amend the budget by $1.5 million and not lose our expenditure restraint aid, which is about $500,000 that we have budgeted in 2026. Regardless of where all the operating budgets end up, I'll come to you and ask you to at least put that amount of money into contingency so that we increase that expenditure restraint capacity moving into subsequent years. Currently still expecting to see revenues exceed expenditures by $200,000 to $300,000 for the year. The 2025 budget that we presented and that the council adopted last year was balanced, it had no fund draw. We might need a fund balance draw in order to pay for that Boys and Girls Club donation. That would be where I would expect fund balance or partial fund balance draw to occur. Pending any questions, that's all that I have for the council tonight.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions for Mr. Godak? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, item number six, the consent agenda. These items will all pass under consent, and let's council member ask to pull it and for discussion. Six A, minutes of the October 13th, 2025 regular city council meeting. B, financial statements for the month of September 2025. C, consideration of action on a proposed resolution approving the 2026 Business Improvement District Operating Plan in downtown Janesville and setting that bid levy for 2025, which is file resolution number 2025-2388. Item D, consideration of action on a proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a local road improvement program supplemental grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to rehabilitate North Washington Street from Highland Avenue to Hamilton Avenue. That's resolution number 2025-2379. Item E, consideration of action on a proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to make an application to Rock County for an exemption from the library tax levy. That's file resolution number 2025-2386. Item F, consideration and action on a proposed resolution authorizing the conveyance of a utility easement to TDS on city-owned property located at 1300 Peterson Avenue and 1300 West Memorial Drive. File resolution number 2025-2376. Item G, consideration of action on a proposed resolution authorizing the conveyance of a utility easement to TDS on city-owned property located at 924 South Jackson Street and 281 Riverside Street. That's file resolution number 2025-2377. Item H, consideration and action on a proposed resolution in commendation of Chad L. Woodman for his more than 25 years of service to the city of Janesville. And that's file resolution number 2025-2385. Any council member wish to pull any of those items? Here are none, those were all passed under consent. Moving on to seven, old business, there is none. Eight, new business. A, consideration and action to award the contract for bid schedule E, 2025, which is C2025-14 WWTP Waste Activated Sludge Thickening Improvements. And we have Brad Rentz, the city manager here, or I'm sorry, city engineer, is here to give a presentation, is he here? All right, why don't you come on up?
He's promoted.
Yeah, well.
Good evening, Council Brad Rentz, city engineer. This is for the award of a contract under bid schedule E for this year. It's related to a project at the city wastewater treatment plant. This is a project that involves the replacement of a system out there as part of the treatment process. And the original system has reached the end of its life, and so this is a planned replacement that's going to provide some new and improved technology. It's going to actually reduce the footprint of this system and this equipment as part of the treatment process, and will be much more efficient and cost-effective to operate. So this project has been in the design process this year. And the project went out for bid in September, and we opened bids in October, we received two bids. And CD Smith Construction Incorporated was the low bidder at $4,51,180. Both bids were relatively tight in comparison and were under the consulting engineer's estimate. So I think that's all positive news. And this contractor is qualified to do this type of work, and so we are recommending that council award this project, contract 2025-14, as well as expressing the intent to fund the contract as outlined in the memo. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council have any questions for you, Rentz? Go ahead.
I just had one, do we, have we ever worked with this contractor before?
This contractor specializes in treatment plant, I personally have not, but I know the consultant has worked with this contractor across the state and does this type of work throughout the state.
Okay, thank you.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, what is the general serviceable life of these types of improvements? Like, when do we expect that we'll have to do this again?
Good question. Well, right now, this thing has lasted about 25 years now, so you can plan on about a 25-ish pace. Now, it really depends on regulations and such as it relates to the treatment plant process, but you could expect this equipment to have about a 25-year life.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for the presentation. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I would move to award contract 2025-14 WWTP Waste Activated Sludge Thickening Improvements and express the intent to fund the contract as outlined in attachment number one.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Williams, a second by Erdman. Any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Council Member Nino, how do you vote?
I vote aye, please.
Thank you, that passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Moving on to eight B, consideration of action on a proposed resolution authorizing the conveyance of the property located at 1909 South Osborne Avenue to Habitat for Humanity, Waukesha, and Jefferson, Rock County. File resolution 2025-2381. And today, we should have a presentation by Housing Director Kelly Bedesem.
Thank you, good evening, Kelly Bedesem, Housing Services Director. So before you tonight is a proposed resolution authorizing the conveyance of 1909 South Osborne to Habitat for Humanity of Waukesha, Jefferson, and now Rock. This action directly supports the city's Housing for All strategic priority by promoting redevelopment of vacant property into affordable owner-occupied housing. The city acquired this parcel in 2018 through the Rock County Tax Foreclosure Program. Former one-bedroom house was beyond feasible repair and was demolished by the city. The site has remained a city-maintained vacant lot since that time. Consistent with all of our other housing efforts, Habitat for Humanity has expressed interest in constructing a new affordable, single-family owner-occupied home on this parcel. This conveyance would transfer ownership at no cost, contingent upon timely construction and compliance with zoning and permitting requirements. This partnership builds on the city's broader efforts to expand affordable housing in our community. The Community Development Authority, or the CDA, recently designated Habitat for Humanity as a community housing development organization, or what we refer to as a CHODO, and recommended $850,000 in home investment partnership funds to support future Habitat projects citywide. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Habitat for Humanity to share some more details about their program and this project specifically.
Hi, good evening, my name is Zach Knudsen, and I'm the CEO and principal owner of Next Generation Holdings. We are a single-family home developer and building contractor here in Rock County, and I've been given the short straw of introducing Habitat for Humanity and trying to give you guys a little bit of a background of how we're here tonight. First, thank you to all city staff for your commitment and your hard work at getting to this point, and thank you to city council for listening to us on a very busy agenda night, so we'll try to make it brief. Over last summer, I was invited to a fundraising event in Waukesha, and I was really struck by just the care and the willingness that Habitat and their professional outlook on building affordable homes. Given that we're the largest home developer here in Rock County, and I do believe that we build quality but affordable homes as compared to other markets, I'm not remiss and I understand that it's not affordable enough. And so we, as a family-owned company, have tried any, every way to work with the community to best suit this affordability crisis and to use our best efforts to partner with nonprofits such as Habitat to try to bring the cost of living down for certain families. So before I turn it over to Melissa, we are acting as a construction manager for Habitat for Humanity at free of no charge. We're helping with building design, integrating their systems into local contractors, helping with the permitting process, understanding certain future development pipelines, and really just trying to get their feet up and running here in Rock County to really make a positive stamp on this community, so. Melissa?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm Melissa Sanco, CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Waukesha, Jefferson, and Rock County, and I'm so glad everybody was here to see me tonight. Thank you so much for your welcome to Janesville for housing. So I did prepare some slides, but I know you've got a lot going on, so I'll kind of blaze through a few of them. I just, you know, these builds here in Janesville are going to be our first as our affiliate enters and builds homes here. You know, there was a Habitat here many years ago and unfortunately unwound as the, you know, the housing crisis of the 2008. know, the housing crisis of the 2008, 2009. And so we're really excited to be able to serve families here in Janesville. So our mission and vision has been on the screen for a little bit, so I think we can go past that. Our little now serving, so this is a little illustration of our service area of Waukesha, Jefferson, and Rock Counties. Just very brief history, we've built over 70 homes in the city of Waukesha. We also have homes being built right now in Fort Atkinson. We're doing a groundbreaking for 12 units in Watertown. We have 26 homes in active construction phases right now in our different communities. We've served 24 families through our repair program. And we're also are a program administrator for the Department of Health Services Lead Abatement Program. So we actually have two homes here in Janesville and two homes in Beloit in our pipeline for the lead safe homes program as well. So we are doing that. We've got 26 employees with a small but mighty leadership team, a robust construction department. We're continuing to, as we grow and expand, figuring out which areas we need to invest in. And we're going to be doing so in our finance department. We do have one restore and I would say we have an expertise in federal funding. And then, of course, we're audited annually. I won't read everything from this slide, but really what's important for you to know is that homeowners put in 200 hours of sweat equity. I think that's, when people hear Habitat, they think of sweat equity. And so our homeowners will be doing homebuyer education, they'll be swinging a hammer at their home, the home of their neighbors, and really kind of getting to know their community kind of from the inside out, as well as being ready to be homeowners and to be able to maintain their homes. Typical house is about 1,400 square feet. We work on usually kind of smaller 50 by 150 lots. And we have about 2,000 volunteers is what it takes per community. How we build, we, as Zach mentioned, we will hire local subcontractors, a lot of small business owners in the community to do that stuff you really don't want volunteers doing, some of the really skilled parts of the home construction. But volunteers are the lifeblood of Habitat. And we love working with volunteers. We hope many of you come out and join us in building in the community. But we do have staff that oversee the construction process as well as the volunteer safety. Volunteers working multiple days a week and then in-kind donations and materials help bring the costs down. You're probably wondering who are the families that you're going to serve? So here's a couple snapshots of them. Typical family of four here in Janesville makes somewhere between 32,000 to 75,000 annually. So it's 30 to 80% the area median income. They do have to deliver work in the community, have to have a 620 credit score or better. They do have to be employed, have stable income. And we do serve a lot of single parents, so that's why I included that as well. What we're planning to do in Janesville, we have four homes that are on our radar, starting with South Osborne. We like to start in the spring and thanks to Next Gen's help, we'll be able to get started and hopefully build the homes fairly quickly. Hope you like it. This is just like an illustration rendering of what we're looking to build. This is a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath with an attached garage, full basement with egress and things like that. So it won't look exactly like that, but this is kind of inspiration for you to get an idea of what our homes look like. This is a map of the Osborne property, kind of where it sits in the community. And just generally, you know, I want to just express my enthusiasm for how warmly we've been received by the community by Zach and his team. By the CDA award was huge for us so we can really get out and build homes quickly and serve families. And then Forward Janesville's been supportive and really exciting to have a lot of the nonprofits support us as well as we're able to serve their clients. That's it. Any questions for me?
All right, thank you. Council have any questions for Habitat? Go ahead.
I've got a few. I'm wondering, did, did all 850,000 go toward Habitat in CHODO funds?
Correct. That's the only application that we received this year for CHODO.
Okay. And will this project be subject to any of the new zoning regulations? Or is this a pretty standard size, everything?
So this is an existing single-family lot. We took a single-family home down, so we're putting a single-family home back up. It's in a residential neighborhood, so there won't be anything that's required of this lot specifically.
Okay. And this is for you. How long do you anticipate this one project to take before, you know, I guess from permitting to occupancy?
Yeah, I think we can sort of sign contracts for the government support next January. We'd like to get started in April and then hopefully turn the keys over in November of next year.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the conveyance of 1909 South Osborne Avenue to Habitat for Humanity, Waukesha, Jefferson, Rock for the construction of an affordable, single-family home.
So I got a motion by Cass and I'll second that, that motion. Is there any other comment?
Just welcome to Rock County and Janesville. Excited to see this start.
Yes, thank you.
I would echo that as well. It's, it's nice to see Habitat come back.
All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Nino, how do you vote?
I vote aye, thank you.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So all business is done tonight, so we'll go to, I'll move back to public comments. So public comments on items on the agenda, not requiring a public hearing, we've already handled everything. So if you've signed up, just come up to one of the podiums, state your name and address, and you have four minutes to speak. Clerk, what's your first name?
We do have several speakers tonight, so try not to repeat each other if you can so that we can get everybody through. Our first speaker is Cassandra Pope.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Pope. I am your neighbor. Proverbs 31, verses eight and nine say, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those being crushed; open your mouth, judge in righteousness, and plead the cause of the poor and needy." You don't have to be religious to connect with that. As I'm sure you all are well aware, I am adamantly against a data center being built on the former GM Jacko site. Based on the almost 1,000 followers the No Janesville Data Center Facebook page has gotten in a short amount of time, the near 400 No Data Center yard signs that have been distributed or requested, the relentless comments and posts that I've seen on social media, and the amount of people in chambers tonight, it seems like a large portion of the community is against it also. The most common concerns that I've heard from the community regarding the data center revolve around the environmental and health impacts, rise in utility bills, loss of property values, lack of permanent job creation, and industry uncertainty. Though I deeply share all of those concerns, my number one concern right now is people. I am fighting for the well-being and the protection of the people in my community, specifically right now for those who live in the neighborhoods surrounding the GM Jacko property. You may not fully understand or believe the hype that's surrounding the health and environmental impacts of data centers and the toll that they take on a community, but there are a considerable and substantial number of studies and articles showing the damages they cause. What if they are right? Would you honestly be willing to take that risk for you, for your family, for your neighbors? If you wouldn't live next door to that, you shouldn't force anyone else to either. Even if the GM industrial plant is what most of these residents were used to, it doesn't mean that that is what they should have to continue to live with. They are finally breathing fresh air after over a century of air pollution from GM. We should want that and better for them, just like I would want that for all of you. The middle of residential neighborhoods is not the right place for an industrial park or a data center. A factory may have been acceptable, or not, in that space over a century ago when the GM plant was built, but times have changed and we now know better and we need to do better. It is time to assimilate that space into the surrounding community, which is a decision that should be considered and heavily influenced by the recent committee formed for this very reason. This is not a NIMBY situation. About a quarter of our city lives within a mile of that site and they have the right to clean air and water and good quality of life. I get that it's impossible to make everyone happy, but that is not an excusable answer when there are other options available that can benefit the larger majority of our city's population with incredibly less risk. The greater good does not apply when you are putting a quarter of our city, which is tens of thousands of people's lives, health, and livelihoods at stake. Tax dollars, though tied up in a tid, are not worth the destructive impacts on their health or the environment. There are better alternatives. We just need you to pause and consider them. That one-fourth percentage doesn't even consider the number of people that this project would affect in neighboring communities such as Beloit, who are already struggling with poor air quality issues and any pollution we put into the waters flowing right in their direction. With a decision this big, the bigger picture has to include more than just what's in our city borders. A data center is a huge risk. I don't think any of you can deny that. You have no guarantee of the outcomes being favorable or of the ability to hold a corporation of that size accountable. No amount of money is worth the potential harm this is going to put the people in the surrounding neighborhoods in. People are more important than money. Again, if you want to see Janesville flourish, start investing in people, not infrastructure. Please vote against any and all motions that would allow any forward progress towards considering, allowing, planning, or constructing a data center within our city limits. Thank you and thank you to everybody who came today to support our community.
I will say, I can announce the next speaker with, with less applause. And so we hear you, but I can announce the next speaker and with people in the next room, that would be very helpful. Alyssa Capazello, Capazella? I'm sorry. Brad Schmidt.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Capazello. I'm a neighbor from Sumac Drive. We're the house with all the sunflowers. Putting a data center in Janesville would threaten all the things that make this city wonderful. The strain on our natural resources would be irreparable. We currently thrive on fresh water and the gift of our proximity to our Great Lakes. Data centers have been shown to increase drought and to cause water shortages and greatly affect the quality of the water that remains. This data center would damage not only the health of our environment, but the health of all of us here. Rock County already has the poorest air quality of any county in Wisconsin, and we would be making things worse instead of better for everybody. Originally, I came to this wanting to present a lot of questions that have been on my mind, like how can we be certain the information we have and are receiving is accurate? What input and control would we have once this begins? However, I think the only question that really matters is what kind of Rock County do we want to live in or do we want our children to live in? I know my answer to this, and it is not one in which feeding machines more purified water than our residents consume. This will not make us healthy. This will not make us prosperous. This will not make us stronger as a community. Mother Earth is not a resource, she is an heirloom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brad Schmidt. And then Patty Soransky.
Hi, I'm Brad Schmidt, also Sumac. I agree with what's said or will be said and why this isn't a good idea. I mostly want to voice my concern on really the lack of discussion and information and community involvement. As you guys have written in your own advisory board meeting notes, you say, "The city Janesville recognizes that successful redevelopment of the GM Jacko site must be grounded in authentic community engagement and transparent communication. The planning process will not only shape the physical transformation of a former industrial site, but also define how residents, businesses, and institutions view its integration into the surrounding neighborhoods and the city's economy. Community engagement is essential to achieving the city's strategic priority of economic development, ensuring the redevelopment reflects local values, equity, and shared prosperity." And that's pretty much it. You know, I would just like to finish and add that, you know, I'm sure this is something to be fresh in everybody's minds come elections in April. Thanks.
Thank you.
Patty Soransky and then Les Smith.
Good evening. My name is Patty Soransky and I am a lifelong proud Southside resident of Janesville. Thank you for having this listening session this evening. As I see it, the lack of transparency has caused a majority of the concern about the consideration of a data center to occupy the former GM plant grounds. Wisconsin's open records law presumes openness, not secrecy or refusal to release records. I've done my best to do my homework and obtain facts and not buy into the untruths or false statements made about the dangers of data centers. But some points that I do believe are facts include: Data centers' continuous operations generate significant heat, which is necessitating extensive, intensive cooling systems to maintain optimal temperatures. Data centers that use water-based cooling systems lead to substantial water consumption, as we know, potentially straining local resources. Something I didn't know until recently is that data centers rely on diesel backup generators that emit significant pollutants that degrade air quality and compose very serious health risks to nearby communities. Data centers are meant, for the most part, to be self-automated as much as possible. Once they are up and fully operational, many data centers, depending on their size, employ less than 30 people full-time. Although there are many other points to consider, in the interest of time, I will leave it at that, I do respectfully ask that you consider long-term consequences, not short-term gains, and please say no to a Janesville data center. Thank you.
Les Smith and then Casey Peterson.
Hi, I'm Les Smith. And everybody already knows that the land up there is severely contaminated and it would be a major expense to clean it up. And everybody in the neighborhood doesn't really want that. I have an idea that would be a good alternative and would not cost for cleanup is turn it all into a solar farm. At that point, you would have the income from the electricity being spent. You wouldn't have the cleanup. Everything's already encapsulated with the GM concrete there and it would be a productive thing and would not alter the environment or give a problem to the water usage or electrical usage. It would be a positive thing. The former GM plant covers about 140 acres. It's already fenced in and the Jacko site is another 50 acres. And there's been talk about putting in a housing area down there too, an apartment complex. Well, for years, the city council has talked about the Southside being a food desert and that would just exacerbate the problem to start with. So if you turn it all into a solar farm, rather than wasting productive farmland like they're doing all over the state, this is land that really has no valid use right now and it wouldn't cost you any money to rehabilitate it. They could build right over top of what's there and it would be a good use for it instead of, and I think regardless, it's ecologically safe and regardless whatever your decision is, I think the whole thing should be put on a referendum for the whole city to vote on and decide whether or not we really want to go to that one. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Casey Peterson and then Virginia Ray.
Hi, I'm your neighbor, Casey Peterson. I'm not originally from Janesville. I moved here about three years ago after six years of active duty service in the Navy. Janesville was not my first choice of city to live in after having lived all over the country, but as I've maintained my residence here, I have grown to love this city. I even bought my first house here. I love my neighborhood and I don't want to see it tarnished by a data center. The Ojibwe people have a belief that they must work together to maintain the health of the environment for the next seven generations. That is something that's been lost on us in recent decades. Data centers are not a recent invention, but with the rise in popularity of AI, we are seeing a concerning interest in Wisconsin from tech corporations to build them here in our community. in our communities. Data centers pollute our air through their electricity production and generators, which has been mentioned before, but this is also in a study by Caltech. The pollutants include nitrogen oxide, which can cause inflammation to the lungs, skin, and eyes. And this pollution is statistically disproportionately affecting lower-income communities. And where is our lower-income community in Janesville? The South Side, where I live, where hard-working people just trying to get by live, where councilmember Cass spent some time growing up, and where councilmembers Erdman and Miller reside. I live in a predominantly blue-collar neighborhood. This means my neighbors are frequently up at the crack of dawn and hardly home before dusk. They work long hours just to come home and sleep. And data centers don't just pollute our air, they also pollute through light and through noise. Data centers hum while they run, and this noise can be heard for miles. This will inevitably interrupt the sleep cycles of my neighbors. Their campuses also produce so much light that they can disrupt migratory patterns for birds and insects. And we have a wonderful monarch habitat at Paw Print Dog Park, which also duels as a nature sanctuary. And I would hate to never see them flying anymore because of this horrific humming torch that's confusing their migration. In Mansfield, Georgia, a data center has caused so many pollution and infrastructural issues that the residents cannot use their water. This information is coming from an article by BBC, but a woman living near the data center says that she must haul jugs of water to her toilet just to flush it, and that she has to shower with bottled water. We're talking about a data center being built in the middle of our town. Do you really think our infrastructure can handle it? I don't want my neighbors or myself to lose water pressure, and I don't think you should either. Speaking of water, a medium-sized data center, which is about 50,000 square feet, or 1.1 acres, just an FYI, uses 110 million gallons of water a year. That's the equivalent of the annual water usage of 1,000 houses. How many houses does Janesville have? Well, according to the most recent census that I could find, roughly 22,000. And do we know how large a data center is going to be? No. So let's say that they use the total amount of the GM Jacko site, which is roughly 200 acres. We're looking at water usage equivalent to that of 200,000 houses. Now, that is, of course, an extreme hypothetical, but it's concerning that it's even a possibility. This brings me to my last point about the shady nature of this proposal to begin with. Why were we so willing to sign an NDA in the first place? What is there to hide? We, as a community, deserve transparency about the proposed developments in our neighborhoods. This decision is going to affect us all directly in one way or another. There are so many other things we could do with this site. Grocery stores, business park, roller rink, even just warehouses would be better than a data center. Please do the right thing, be considerate of your neighbors, do not allow this proposal to pass. We should take a note from our Ojibwe predecessors and be good stewards of this land to make sure that for the next seven generations, Janesville is a place where people still want to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Ray, then Michael Moser.
I have been talking all day to residents. I'm a homeowner here in Janesville. I live on Milwaukee Street where Black Hawk Credit Union is, and the neighborhood is all homeowners hanging on by their fingernails. We talked today about, you know, the data center, and people really don't know anything, and you haven't been transparent at all. But mostly, we talked about water bills. I'm at $200, and I'm crushed by it, and I thought that was a big deal until I talked to my neighbors who are getting $400 water bills. And you are thinking of making that worse for all of us. So I want to say for people who are listening to this, that there is an article in the Journal Sentinel on Friday, and you should read it, because it's all about what's going on behind closed doors. It's a dissection of how data center investors get city council to buy into the whole trip and sign non-disclosure agreements. So, and then after you read it and you figure out all the mechanisms of how they do it, Google citizens living with data centers. And up will come story after story of how they promised everything. The thing that was in the Journal Sentinel article tells you what they promised. And if you Google "what happens afterward," you get citizens after citizens saying they can't afford their water bills, the pollution, the noise, all that sort of thing that's been talked about already. So I have a proposal tonight, and it has to do with transparency, and it has to do with you working with us to come to some conclusions. You have already, and I think actually you've, you're going to hire a consultant to tell you how to clean up GM's property, and then you say to work with the community and educate the community. I don't know where you're getting the money to do this, but you're gonna do it. And as long as we are paying for it, I have a suggestion. I want a referendum in April. I want this community, all the community, the people that aren't even here tonight, to have a chance to tell you what they think. And until April... Now, I have been so impressed about the people speaking here tonight and the information they had, and I want to say, until that April referendum, I would like a series of town halls on the various, you know, on air pollution, on the water bills, on the electricity bills, on...
You're running out of time, ma'am.
Okay. Those town halls would include your consultant and...
Ma'am, your time's up.
The No Data People.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Moser, and then Cynthia Caldwell.
Hello, my name is Michael Moser, lifetime Janesville resident. I'm not going to be able to do much besides echo a lot of the sentiments we've already heard today, unfortunately, but I'd like to make my voice heard anyways. The referendum, I believe, is the most important item. I believe that there should be more community involvement in something that affects the community so largely. So I also agree with the town halls. I think that the more we speak on the topic and the more we get information out there, we'll be able to make the right decision for our community. We know that there's a lot of water consumption that has already been proven through plenty and plenty of studies. We know the effects on the environment. I think there are many alternatives that the GM site could be used for. I love the idea of a solar farm. I think that's a wonderful idea. It's clean energy. I also have concern that this will not provide a lot of permanent, long-term jobs. Past the construction, there's not going to be a lot of permanent jobs for this. So that is a big concern for me. That really about hits the nail on the head. I think we need more community involvement. People should be able to vote on this, so we can all make our voices heard, and I'd like to rescind the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Caldwell, followed by Ray Jewell.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Caldwell. I live on Marquette Street in Janesville, and I'm against having the data center on the South Side or any place in Janesville. It would be a negative impact on the environment and to our health. Not only that, but having a data center would increase the cost of water and electric bills. I live very close to the GM site, and no thank you. I don't need a constant humming noise to low me to sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Jewell, and then Jerry Sutherland.
Ray Jewell, 624 Cherry Street. My father, growing up, used to say, "That could make a preacher swear." And I was usually playing pool, something like that, and I've always wondered, because I'm a preacher, been on and off for years, and I'm wondering, what would it make for me to swear? I finally found the answer. It's this. It's this whole stinking mess. I apologize, it's all I'm sorry, but I am so sick of this, and I won't swear, but I feel good. I put together a list of communities that have been negatively affected by data centers. Pineville, Oregon, strained local water resources due to high consumption. Loudoun County, Virginia, increased energy demands leading to higher electricity costs. Las Vegas, Nevada, significant water usage impacting drought conditions. Buffalo, New York, infrastructure stress from rapid data center growth. The dailies in Oregon, environmental concerns over hydroelectric power usage. San Antonio, Texas, rising temperatures and energy consumption affecting local climate. St. Louis, Missouri, where the golden arches are, or the arch where they're called. The head of that city's planning agency proposed a moratorium, while the city developed a full understanding of the issue and developed quality land use, environmental, and other regulations. St. Charles, Missouri, they also had a unanimous vote by the city council, a one-year moratorium of the data center idea. Objections in residents in Pennsylvania and Louisiana. Retired school principal, who had organized communities, resistance, told me this, writer, "I worry about the kind of world I'm leaving for my grandchildren. It's not safer, it's not better, and we're selling out to these big corporations. You know, it's not in their backyard, it's in my backyard." San Francisco Bay, Bayview, Hunter's Point, predominantly black, Latino, and Asian-Americans affected by that. Oh, let's get closer to home. Port Washington, Wisconsin, Beaver Dam, Wisconsin, Conosha, Wisconsin, Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin. And how does the Kekana... I don't know if I'm saying that right or not, I'm not an Indian, so I don't know if I pronounce that right. That community knew, surveying a town of 17,000 people, oh, which is by about the number of people that would be affected by this, about fourth of our population, up by Appleton, so around 150 miles from here, how did they seem to know more during the summer than the rest of us who are living here? I mean, he's putting out all this stuff, people are telling him, this is a done deal, and I'm like, really? I didn't know that was a done deal. I thought it was under consideration. I thought we were going to have more input into it. Wisconsin comedian Charlie Burns, somebody said we should have him come. Well, I'm not here, I'm not him, but I'm here for him. He's become actively outspoken on the issue, pointing out when meetings occur like Tuesday's Common Council in Port Washington, a project expected to use the same amount of electricity as the city of Los Angeles, as it will be the largest energy user in Wisconsin history, with Vantage asking for 1.3 gigawatts of energy to be available by 2027, and ultimately 3.7 or 3.5 gigawatts of power.
10 seconds remaining, sir.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Jerry Sutherland, and then Angelina.
Well, I'm Jenny Sutherland. I have been a lifelong resident in Janesville. I originally came to talk to you about bringing businesses to that area that would use the railhead that is originally there, and that is the interstate that would be for manufacturing and would bring actual jobs. When you state that this would bring hundreds of jobs for the data center, that is incorrect. It's pretty much a ghost site, that it would bring about 20 to 30, maybe 50 jobs. We need something, if you're going to bring something there, that would bring real jobs to Janesville. We know that after GM left, it burdened us, and we were like a ghost town. We need something that would bring real jobs back to Janesville. If you want to bring something there that's going to use what we have already there. I am against the data center for a multitude of reasons. All that have been explained to you already. I have children, I have grandchildren. I'm going to be around for a long time, and will be living right there and have large concerns. I hope that you listen and that are for the people. There is nothing more important than community, and community is people, not money. We are brought together as people, and that's what's most important, and I hope that you hear us and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angelina, then Sam.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angelina. I'm a longtime resident of Janesville and an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Here we are again tonight, but with the support of our wonderful Janesville community and members and friends. I have not seen this much presence and pushback at a city council meeting, so this really says something. It is clear that our community does not want or need a data center, and it is clear that our residents want healthy, responsible, and transparent economic planning. This space has so much potential to be better used for our community's needs, but city staff still sidesteps and ignores our residents' rightful concerns to jump into a profit trend that won't give back to the ones who will be greatly affected by the pollution and economic despair a data center will create. We demand an immediate public release of all details, proposals, and communications regarding the data center. We demand a full independent study of environmental and economic impacts of the data center, with results made public before any council vote. We demand a public vote and a referendum to decide what goes into the old GM and Jacko site. And lastly, we demand the prioritization of community needs to use the GM and Jacko site for grocery stores, affordable housing, or a multi-use green space, things that our community lacks. We know that these data centers are not being built for the good of the surrounding residents. Big tech corporations are pushing for these centers secretively, wrongfully, and swiftly, only to benefit the very few who will control them. Do not continue the city's neglect on the South Side. Doing so, this time for this project, will not only stay where it poisons, but will leech out to all of Janesville. Stand with Janesville working-class residents. We do not want a data center. We want and need the promised transparency from city staff and community prosperity.
Sam, and then Brad Mulligan.
Great to see y'all out here and making sure that they hear our voices and know what we're here for and everything. So my name is Sam Nemitz, and I'm also an organizer for the Party for Socialism and Liberation, as well as a proud resident of Janesville. And like most people here in the chambers, I am here tonight to express my profound concern and firm opposition... and firm opposition to the proposed data center. Let us be perfectly clear. Our position is not just a request for more information. It is a demand that you act on the information that we already have, that has already been given out tonight, and a lot of information that has been given out tonight already. The known impacts of this project are catastrophic and unacceptable. And the science is settled. Data centers of this scale are ecological disasters. They would consume millions of gallons of water every single day, placing an unsustainable burden on the resource that is the livelihood of our community. They would draw enough power for tens of thousands of homes, straining our grid and risking higher energy and water bills for all of us. For this, we are offered a handful of temporary jobs, that was mentioned as well, and permanent environmental harm. This is not a difficult equation. The cost to our water, our air, and our long-term stability far outweigh any speculative benefit. Therefore, we are not here just to ask for a better deal. We are here to tell you that there is no deal to be made. Our demand is that you reject this project outright. To be clear, we do support transparency. We believe the public has every right to see every document, every email, and every study that has been hidden from us. But let no one mistake our call for transparency as an invitation to negotiate. We will use that information as irrefutable proof of why this project must be stopped, not to bargain away our community's health. The time for advisory boards and closed-door meetings are over. The time for leadership is now. You have a clear choice before you. You can side with the short-term profits and interests of a billionaire tech corporation, or you can side with the majority of South Side and Janesville residents as a whole. We elected you to protect their health, their homes, and their future. We demand you reject this project outright and stand with your community. We demand you choose us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Mulligan, then Diane Dooley.
Oh, it could be monger.
Got to get a typewriter out there.
Thank you, council members, neighbors, and city manager, Lainer. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. Basically, much of what I wanted to say has already been said. We already know about the voracious electricity needs, the very thirsty water demands of a data center. We already know about the noise pollution, the light pollution, the potential runoff of disturbing that capped brown field, and the bad water that could run off of that and then run into the river and harm our neighbors in Beloit, as well as downstream. We've heard from the citizens that we need to have a more open process, not a signed nondisclosure agreement. It was pretty poignant that the investors and the oligarchy approached the city before a request for proposals went out. So, this was already being contemplated well before the city started to think about putting out an RFP. So, it makes people skeptical about what's going on within the decision-making process. We've also heard that there are many viable alternatives to the site utilization other than the data center. The idea of a solar farm, terrific idea. Grocery store, other needed things. Many of our South Side residents would appreciate that much more than a humming, buzzing data center that allows maybe thirty to a hundred high-tech jobs going in there. Claims that it would entail a lot of construction jobs from Janesville. I'm not so sure. I suspect those data centers and those investors already have their people lined up who do those sorts of things for them contractually, and they may not even be from the city of Janesville. So, I urge you to put this before the citizens, put it out on a referendum, and have more public hearings, more openness, and allow the citizens to speak as they are tonight. Let's continue that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diane Dooley, then Julie Backenkeller.
Hi, well, I thought I was signing an attendance sheet when I signed. So, but all I have to say, I think everybody's said all the good stuff already. I feel like when the Woodman Sports Center went in, I feel like I was gypped, because I felt like that was pushed through, no referendum, and I've been angry about it ever since. And I get angry every time I pass, and I'm up and down Milton Avenue almost every day. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Julie Backenkeller, and then Shar Hermanson.
Hi, everybody. Long time no see. Julie Backenkeller, 719 North Grant Avenue. I am a founding member of the Sustainable Janesville Committee. And when we first started this committee, I can't even remember when it was, so many years ago. My vision for it was to be an advisory committee for the city council. So, you would get a proposal like this data center, and you would hand it off to your sustainable, your environmental committee. They would do the research on it and present up something back to you with more information. And I don't feel like that committee has ever been used for anything but recycling cans and things like that. So, I think you're wasting a lot of resources and good volunteers in the community with that Sustainable Janesville Committee. A couple of things I want to bring up about this data center is that I'm so excited to see so many people here, and young people, thank goodness. I was talking to my young kids about this, and they're all like, "Mom, we don't need more AI. My kids are throwing their phones out. They're getting off of social media." This, these companies are coming in and dangling a carrot in front of communities, and it's a false, it's a false flag. It's not something that, it's not a need. And there's tax breaks that are given for these data centers. There are six large-scale data centers, projects in progress in the state right now. Six already. And much of the $4 billion Microsoft will spend on the facility over in Milwaukee County will go untaxed, along with the major operating of that data center, once it's fully operational. So, they tell you, you know, "You think you're going to get so much money in tax revenue? Well, no, you don't." So, then on Saturday, I found this document that Amazon strategized about keeping its data centers' full water use secret, and there was a leaked document about it. So, to me, I mean, just the fact that all these people are here to speak tonight to you about this, this secret meeting stuff and behind-the-scenes, you know, I just think it's, it's, we're above that, we're past that. And you can do better. We can do better as a community. So, thank you.
Shar Hermanson, and then Claire Gray.
Thank you, Shar Hermanson, president of Forward Janesville. Thank you all for letting us come and speak tonight. And I wanted to just start off by saying, economic development is not straightforward. The Centennial Park Community Survey drafted April 16th, 2019 by Ayers and Associates, Angus Young, Baderman, and Caldwell Banker for CDC drafted a plan for economic development. Recently, Forward Janesville has conducted 23 interviews over the last three months to gain additional insights into what a modern data center development, pros and cons are, so that we can inform our members and inform the community. Fast forward to 2025. We do have an opportunity to support another community central economic development project on the former GM JACCO site. This will require cooperation of an experienced partner, Alliant Energy, the city of Janesville, the DNR, and the rail partner. We want to assess what opportunities exist for the site. Some things that could be advanced nuclear, radio pharmaceuticals, like Shining. Green energy technologies. Advanced manufacturing with automation, like a battery production facility. Biotech, health, medical devices, wellness. Data centers. AI infrastructure, agritech, food processing, and others. So, it's a short list of things that could go on the site. Each requires a capex of investment of $30 to $80 million to bring to life this project. Impacts range from 30 jobs to 200. But a very important factor on this equation is that this is a brownfield site. That would add another $30 to $50 million of remediation before starting a project. This factor alone doubles the investment on this site versus other sites. Data centers are uniquely suited to deal with the brownfield remediation, where other sectors would only want to build on a greenfield site, which could take up farmland. A data center requires, creates jobs in two ways. Construction of the facility and ongoing work in the location, as well as maintenance, repairs, and hardware of the building. Because of the nature of their work, this industry professionals often rehabilitate the brownfield site. Modern data centers have evolved to use little or no water in their operations. They also have advanced technology to renew noise output. As a community, you can identify what noise level, aesthetic, and green space requirements that you want. Modern data centers do invest in schools above the tax base and provide scholarships for students. New data centers use green building technologies. Looking back to the Centennial Park survey of the community, these are the five things that the community wanted when they were surveyed. Number one was jobs. Number two was environmental remediation. Three was aesthetic improvements of the site. Business and industry sector diversification, and infrastructure. The site is Zoned M2, which is clarifying to understand. It's meant for general industrial, manufacturing, production, storage, designed for heavier things and manufacturing.
Twenty seconds.
What does this tell us? Janesville has been identified as an opportunity to jumpstart. It is number 22 listed in the United States as an opportunity zone. It has good schools, there are science graduates, and there's a good quality of life.
Your time's up, ma'am. Thank you.
Claire Gray, go ahead, and then Jackson Lentz, you're on deck.
Thank you. My name is Claire Gray, and I'm the Director of Policy and Strategic Initiatives at Forward Janesville. We're the Janesville Area Chamber of Commerce and Private Economic Development Organization, and we represent more than 600 members here in Janesville, Rock County, and the state line. I'm also a Janesville resident, and I've lived here since 2015. There are a lot of passionate people here tonight to address Janesville's future, and we're excited about that. We need community engagement at all levels to ensure that what we do for Janesville's future works for everyone. I'm here to speak on behalf of our Forward Janesville members and their perspectives on redevelopment. Presently, we have data center developers interested in the site, but we have few details. Will the data center take the whole site? Only part of it? How much water will it use? Will residential electricity bills go up? How many permanent jobs will be created? How much property tax revenue is expected? Are there better uses for the site, like housing, entertainment, a community center, a park, a new Monterey Stadium? How long will it be before the site is fully developed and it's no longer sitting unactivated? These are questions raised by our members, from August 18th, excuse me, 8th to September 2nd. The survey was about GM JACCO's redevelopment in general, but many brought up the data center specifically. Survey's respondents' biggest concerns were broader opportunities versus limited job creation, environmental impacts and energy needs, questions about alternative use possibilities, and community engagement opportunities. In due diligence to our membership, we conducted 20-plus interviews with developers, suppliers, utility partners, economic development professionals, and practitioners in the data center space. Our interviews resulted in four major findings. One, data centers have been around since the 1940s. They first started, they were computers themselves. As technology evolved, computers became smaller. In the 1990s, data centers became places where data was stored. Those were the servers. Then when cloud computing came onto the scene in the early 2000s, data centers evolved again and started processing data. Those are computational data centers. The computational data centers became supercharged when AI came onto the scene in the mid-2000s. And post-COVID, their construction is accelerating. Indeed, we all know that, that's why we're here. We're seeing the headlines, and we're sitting in this room. Two, the data center industry is rapidly evolving. Data centers know they are large consumers of water, so they are working towards low-usage water systems, closed-loop, or no-water systems, liquid cooling. There are also different types of data centers. Mount Pleasant, that's an AI training facility. Hundreds of people are going to be employed. Before you know what the data center is coming to your community, you need to know what type of data center it is. Third, they're essential infrastructure for our tech-centered lives and economy. They're becoming just as critical to our modern-day life as roads and bridges. Fourth, communities have power in the dialogue. They can prioritize local needs and protect local resources through development agreements, ordinances, community benefits agreements, the permitting process, and memorandums of understanding, among other policy mechanisms. We don't know the contents of these development proposals. But what we do know is there's a process to evaluate development projects, and we know that there's oversight led by the Janesville City Council, a volunteer citizen-led council. Council Policy 47 lays out the process for development projects. Additionally, city staff is required to reapproach the city council with a recommended data center developer per the July 14th resolution. Like any development project, the answer is not a straight line from A to B. There are upsides and downsides, and they must be weighted. And decisions must be data-driven and based on specific proposal details, not generalities. Our community has already said no to heavy industrial and intermodal on this site. Levels of contamination and the high cost to remediate make large-scale residential development unlikely. The community users face similar obstacles. It is important to consider what is realistically feasible on this site and make a sound call on what our community is ready to say yes to. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please respect every speaker, and their four minutes. Jackson Lentz, and then Jacob, I hope it's Barnick. Jackson, are you here? Jackson's next door, we'll give him a minute to get in here. You can use this podium if you wish. Go ahead when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Jackson Lentz. I am 17, I attend Craig High School. A data center would be a negative thing for our community, not gain as much as you guys are proposing that we gain from it. I think that the release of PFAS from the data center, which are forever chemicals that use stream water and things of that nature, detrimental to our ecosystem. There's better uses for the land, I mean, it's a big plot. It's a really big plot. We could do so much with that land and not an eyesore. Something most can agree on. That's all.
Thank you.
Jacob, and then Aaron Klipstein.
Hey. Oh, I must have typo'd. My name is Jacob Barnick. I live on 606 North Wuthering Hills Drive, on the northwest side, or the east side. I'm a big perspective guy. I'm an engineer, I have to be. I have to understand how my decisions affect others in the long run, the end user. And because of my line of work, I'd like, I chose to speak today, and this is the first time I've ever done it. 26 years old, I'm a young guy, and I appreciate all the young people in this room. I'm a critical thinker. I don't use AI, I don't stand for AI. I use my brain. And that's what's driving all this data center mass explosion of, "We need more, we need more, we need more." In fact, I previously worked at United Alloy, somebody who makes the diesel fuel tanks for the generators being used at these data centers. And they are pumping them out. Now, I didn't choose what I got to manufacture or make, and it was a great job. And Janesville's very own manufacturing job, they employ hundreds of people, it's great. But the people that they affect, well, not, not United Alloy, but the data centers, they affect people. And somewhere along the lines, that was a disconnect. Or unfortunately, and I hope this isn't the case, they knew Or unfortunately, and I hope this isn't the case, they knew that perspective and chose otherwise, and that's quite selfish. So as a perspective guy, if you don't know what a data center looks like, I want you to look one up. They're not very pleasant to look at, and if you need to know and be reminded of what they look like, tape one up on your window and look at it every morning when you wake up, because that's what those people are going to be looking at. You've got hundreds of people in that area that are going to wake up and see diesel generators and these terribly ugly-looking things, and that's what they're going to come home to, that's going to leave, that they're going to leave and go to work to, to support our community, every day. It's not a very motivating thing to look at every day. Will data centers continue to grow and populate the rest of the United States? Probably. But I believe they could be done so in a non-destructive and not pressing manner that's in somebody's We talked about jobs earlier, that they're suspecting that about 100 jobs are going to be in that site. Well, there's about 3,000 unemployed people in Janesville right now, that's only 3% of the people. Even if you put manufacturing jobs there, people would have a short commute to work, and you could employ possibly 1,000 people there. That's an absurd amount of money and jobs that you could be producing there long-term. People could commute a block to work, just as the Janesville GM site used to be there. Now, I agree, that's not great for the water or anything else either, but arguably it's better than a data center. Data center doesn't do anything except for build AI, and we don't really need that, it's not, it's been discussed as it's not really a need. It's a want. People are relying on it, and they don't need to be. People can use their brains, it's not that hard, right? And yeah, I already burnt through four minutes, but I appreciate all your time. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Aaron, and then Andrea Breyer Moon.
Hi, good evening, council. Everybody, my name is Erin Klipstein, I'm a lifelong resident of Janesville. I'm living on South Grant, so I'm a south-side resident. Proud to be from Janesville, so much that I chose to commute for college, both my undergrad and graduate degrees, so I could stay here in what is my home. I want to start out by saying that I really appreciate the time that you guys dedicated to serving your community. I know very often, it's a thankless job, so I want to start by saying that it's really important what you guys are doing. But it's also not a minor thing, the decisions that you make carry real weight, and that's why I'm here tonight, because the choices that are being made about major city projects will shape our community for decades. And the way these choices are made matters as much as the outcomes of the choices. And I could stand here tonight and talk about the potentially catastrophic environmental impacts that a poorly managed brownfield development site could cause, I think we've covered that, about the devastating effects that it has, could have on the quality of life for our residents. And I could even mention that certain types of these developments are exempt from Wisconsin's sales and use tax, or that the TID district may not close for more than two decades, meaning any tax benefit for the citizens wouldn't be realized until 2045 or later. And those are all really real concerns. I could even stand here today and discuss the fact that the only way these concerns will be mitigated is by, or by development companies, is if municipalities force their hand and hold them accountable to fix the issues before they start. And that's the crossroads that we stand at today. But that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. Instead, I want to talk about something even more important, and it's something that should be a thread running through all levels of government, that's engagement, process, and transparency. Transparency is not just a checkbox. It's the foundation of trust between our elected officials and the people that they represent. And when residents see information withheld, meetings held in closed session, or requests for public records ignored or delayed, that trust is eroding. The city has established processes for a reason. These include RFP procedures, free access to public records, public input periods, and advisory committees. They exist to both protect the public and the council, ensuring that all major decisions are based on sound information and open dialogue. The appearance of bypassing processes, abbreviating these processes, or seemingly making them up as you go, especially in a project of this scale and potential impact, sends the wrong message to residents. It tells us that our voices don't matter, that decisions are being made behind closed doors, and that's not the city that we want to be, it's not the city I want to live in, it's not the city that these people want to live in. Engagement means more than holding a single public meeting, or posting a document online, or even having an advisory committee. It means genuinely listening, seeking input early and often, welcoming tough questions, and making adjustments when residents raise valid concerns. We have a wealth of knowledge and passion right here in our community. We have engineers, we have scientists, we have educators, we have business owners, we have people who care deeply about how this project unfolds, and these voices should not be treated as obstacles, but rather as assets. So at the end of the day, at the end of the day, each of you serves the will of the citizens, you work for us, not the other way around. And the community's input should not be as formality, but it should be the guide path forward. I urge you to recommit to transparency, and I thank you for your time tonight.
I'm Andrea Breyer Moon, 339 South Locust Street. Please return the GM land to the prior private owner. I don't believe that the city has any right, nor the skill set, to force we, the people, the citizens, to become entrepreneur, investor capitalists in commercial redevelopment. In this room, I only see one person that would be close to an entrepreneurial investor capitalist, and he would probably be smart enough to use other people's money, which is, oh, maybe ours, and at least he's on our council. I don't know if there could be a class action suit against the city to stop them from forcing us to be investor capitalists with our money, because they're borrowing it and they're charging us interest. The federal USAID blank check, free money is gone, so we cannot collect handouts for the contamination cleanup if we were unwise enough to encapsulate the grounds. So I'm hoping we will return the land, dissolve the committee, stay in our own lane, fix our roads, and I'm also want to share that I think referendums come from we, the people, and apparently ideally you would want eight or nine months to pull it off, but theoretically, if you kick some serious butt, you could probably do it in the five months that are left, but you'd need about $6,000 to $8,000, and a lawyer that's going to take the city to court at least twice to force them to do the next step. So, let's see, oh, and if we go back to the 1920s model, we would have real representation. So this is what you can imagine, two council members voted from each of our four neighborhoods, and a mayor elected, and then we've got like 28 wards, give or take, about 1,000 homes per ward. If we had a ward steward from each of those 28 wards, and they each had 10 block captains, we'd have 300 people here at every city council meeting. We could keep them here till Thursday. And you know whose fault it is that they're doing the best they can with not enough and can't hear from our voices because there isn't the mechanism? It's ours, because we let them make things easy for us. In 1920, we took politics out of local government, which means a dictatorship, and pretty much by the nature of the beast, it serves 3% of the people at the expense of 97% of us. So my phone number is 608-295-3110, 295-3110. I'm thrilled that y'all be in here, I'm thrilled that there's young people, I'm thrilled that they brought up an issue that brings the left and the right together. That's cracking me up right now.
Thank you.
I'm Brandy Martinez, and I am a resident on Garfield Avenue, and I am certified psychic clairvoyant, I'm an astrologer, I serve clients internationally and nationally, politicians, police, lawyers, all kinds of people. But I'm here as a resident, and what I want to talk about is, when I pulled Janesville's birth chart, which I'll try to share on Facebook or something like that, I don't know, I don't like public representation much, so, okay, so when I pulled Janesville's birth chart, this is the day that Janesville was actually signed in as a city, essentially. This is dated 1853. There's a couple of placements I just want to talk about to the council that does affect how you govern. The first placement that I think is important for you to know, to hear from an astrologer, is you have what's called a stellium in your 12th house. A stellium is when you have a huge concentration of planets that show up in one section of your city's birth chart. And what that does is cause a lot of problems, okay? Your stellium involves both Aries and Taurus, which are tied to land, finances, war, and also transportation. All the planets that are aligned in this particular house indicate secrecy, indicate aligning with people who don't always have your best interests at hand, and also having a really hard time rectifying your history with honesty and transparency, and literally being in a position where you're suffering for it for years afterwards, because you didn't think about the quality of life of the people in your city. And it's tied into money, it's always tied into money, it's always tied into land acquisition, okay? The other placement I want to bring up is called Chiron, that is our wound as a city. Chiron is sitting in Capricorn, right in your ninth house, which means you are open to hearing new ideas, but you typically go with things that feel familiar. And a lot of this transit usually aligns with like having daddy issues, like always trying to kind of like, you know, prove that, yeah, we know what we're doing, we're financially responsible, we can get things done, okay? But in 2052, we're going to hit a mark where if we're not making progress and living up to our potential, which is actually in Aquarius, which is all about unique identity, creativity, healthcare, and humanity, like coming together to do better things, to clean air, clean water, clean environment, that is in our mid-heaven, that's what we're going to be known for, that's what we're going to be famous for, okay? But we're stuck in this one part here, where Chiron is telling us, no, no, it's so familiar to slip into these behaviors and these structures that have always done well for us. So what I would ask you to do is learn from that 12th house, because those are things that will literally take people to therapy, right? Or go through a spiritual reckoning.
Your time's out. Thank you.
So that concludes everybody that had signed up prior to the meeting.
All right, and council's received all written statements via email?
Council has received all written statements as of 4:00 PM.
All right, thank you.
We, we don't, that was a COVID thing, we send those on to the council, and those are for them to, to review. No, Ms. Breyer Moon, we're not reading them tonight.
All right.
What is your name?
If you're here and you want to speak, I'll go ahead and allow it.
Brennan P.
Please come up and state your name and address for us, please.
My name's Brennan, I live at Paul, I live on 1259 East Milwaukee Street. Now, you can probably all assume what I'm about to talk about. I'm about to talk about the data center. Everyone's kind of like hit on the big ones, the big negatives, like the power and water usage, both from the groundwater and the river, which of course is going to increase bills, and the cost of living in Janesville, which is already too high as is. It also contributes to the climate crisis, you know, with the pollution, and there's also the noise pollution. This has a negative impact on both the community, like us, the people, and the environment, or the wildlife, I should say. And then of course, you know, any money that's going to be made out of the data center is going to be sucked up into a large corporation somewhere else. Two things that I don't really think were touched upon yet were the fact that a lot of the jobs that a data center provides are highly specialized, and so that means that a lot of Janesville residents wouldn't just be able to go and apply, which I don't think, again, is, anyway, don't need a data center. Another big thing that I don't think has been touched upon at all is that data centers only really last about 15 to 20 years, especially right now, the chips just keep getting like better, and so they keep pretty much getting outdated as soon as they're being installed. So if we spend all this money on a data center, then we are going to have a large building that is going to be outdated or need to be constantly revitalized, which I don't think the community has the money for. So that's why I think that we shouldn't have a data center, so yeah, thank you.
Is that the last one?
I think so.
All right.
His name was crossed out, so I apologize.
Okay, all right, we're moving on. Item nine, common council announcements. Is there any announcements? Go ahead.
I just wanted to make mention that we have received literally hundreds of emails and telephone calls, and as much as I would like to spend time with each and every email, I just can't. And I think I speak for the council, appreciating that people are reaching out and that they're engaged, but we just don't have the ability to reach out to everybody else. Thank you for reaching out, we just can't answer every email, and please understand that, it's just not possible.
All right, any other comments that's not business-related? Okay, all right, moving on to item 10, consideration of one or more motions to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons are required, a closed session, in particular, the GM Jacko site data center proposals. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session. I got a motion by Williams, second.
Second.
Second by Cass. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we got six aye, one nay, that'll pass. We are going to be going into closed session, and we will not be reconvening into open session.
You will not be reconvening into open session.
Correct.